Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Town Hall to tonight's meeting, Monday, December the first. Good evening, and it's beginning to look a lot like Christmas. We've got a packed house in here today. Glad to see all the faces here today. First and foremost, please note that there will be opportunity during the meeting for citizens to address Town Council when the mayor, me, declares public comment open. We requested anyone addressing the council sign up, approach the podium when called, and state your first and last name. Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
Ms. Pillion.
Here.
Vice Mayor Austin.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Let the record reflect Mr. Webb's accent.
Now, if Mike Cochran will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if everyone will please remain standing, I have Ms. Barbara Farmer from Pleasant View Church here to say a prayer for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Shall we pray? Father, I thank you so much for the privilege of appearing before this body, duly elected, and here to represent the town of Abingdon. Father, it's a privilege I don't take lightly. And I would ask tonight that you instill in these who represent us, the citizens of this beautiful little town in southwest Virginia, that you would instill in them a sense of dedication, a sense of urgency, a sense of doing the right thing for the right reasons and not the most expedient reasons. So, Father, guide them with wisdom and fill their hearts with justice so that they might give attention to the least of us as well as the greatest. It's in the name of the one we serve that I pray, Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Now, we have the approval of the agenda. If someone would like to make their motion for the approval of the agenda, or shall we? First, I have some changes that we're going to be making with our agenda. I need a motion to amend the agenda to hear items L dash two, second reading of ordinance to enact an emergency management program for the town of Abingdon to be considered after items G, public comment. And table items L dash one, second reading of ordinance to repeal, amend, and reenact Chapter 18 Business, Article Six, peddlers, peddlers, canvassers, solicitors, and food beverage vendors, including fair and festival, until next meeting. If I have someone to make a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments, further comments? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. And now, we have the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, November the third, two thousand and twenty-five. If someone will make a motion to approve those minutes?
Submove.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
I'm going to have to step back from that one because I was not here at that meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Now, we're going to move on to public comment. And it looks like we have two people signed up for public comment. And just remember, when I call your name, if you'll come state your name and your full address. The first person signed up for public comment this evening is going to be Ms. Julian Miles.
Good evening. I'm Julian Miles. I live at three eighty-four Oakmont Drive in Abingdon, Virginia. And I'm here to speak to you this evening about the item that was on the agenda, and I realize it's been tabled, but there are still a couple of issues with that second reading of the ordinance regarding soliciting and canvassing. Specifically, the two things that I would like to bring to your attention. First of all, I want to say thank you so much because I have been here to talk to you about this a lot. It is very clear from reading this that you listened and that you've made a lot of really good changes to it. And I think so far, it's a good document except for just a couple of things that I would like to bring up to you. On page thirty-three and paragraph four, where it talks about canvassers, there is still a concern that I have. In the last part of the description of canvassers, it includes a requirement to have a means of identification provided by such organization. And I do have concerns about what would qualify as identification. Do you just need to have your driver's license to identify who you are, or do you need identification from the campaign? And I'm speaking from the standpoint of somebody canvassing for a political candidate. If I'm out canvassing for you, do I need to have some type of identification from your campaign saying who I am? You know, that's a somewhat burdensome requirement, particularly for small-town politics, to have to provide an identification thing. Maybe I just need a campaign button. I don't know. What is that identification? Is it just I need to be able to provide identification for who I am? I think that needs some clarification. On page thirty-eight, you've added a paragraph there about a citizen's right to privacy. And I recognize that your purpose there, you state that the section affirms the right of residents to privacy and to limit unwanted commercial and non-commercial solicitation. And of course, people have a right to put up no soliciting, no trespassing, even no canvassing signs. And by doing so, the homeowner or the H O A can limit what they want to hear. But the town should not be able to limit what people hear through this ordinance. A particular concern is the subsections, paragraph seven and eight, operating only between the hours of nine a.m. to five a.m. Monday through Friday and not on state or federal holidays. You have almost certainly all knocked on doors. And if you cannot knock on doors except between nine and five, Monday through Friday, you are not going to be talking to people when they're at home. And that's your whole purpose in going out to canvass, is to talk to people when they're at home. So, this restriction, I think, is an unreasonable restriction. I think that it should be more in the neighborhood of maybe up until seven p.m. or when there's hours of darkness. Or, but Saturdays should be available for canvassing, and holidays should also be available for canvassing. I have serious concerns about that piece of the restriction and how it restricts political speech. Okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Next signed up for public comments will be Ms. Cindy Green. Good evening, Ms. Green. How are you?
Good. How are you all?
Fine.
Cindy Green, ten seventy-five Clark Street, Bristol, Virginia. So, while I am a Bristol native, I was also a candidate for House of Delegates this past election. So, this is near and dear to my heart. So, I'm here today to speak because I care deeply about open government, civic participation, and the constitutional rights that protect every member of our community, no matter their political views. The proposal to restrict political canvassing to Monday through Friday from nine to five is not simply a scheduling issue. It is a serious First Amendment concern, and it would have major consequences for our community, for how our community engages in elections. First, I want to be clear, political canvassing is one of the most protected forms of speech under the U.S. Constitution. The Supreme Court has repeatedly affirmed that going door-to-door to talk with voters, share information, and distribute literature is fundamental to our democracy. It is not solicitation. It is not commercial activity. It is a core political speech. Under the Constitution, any regulation of political canvassing has to meet a strict legal test, and it must be content neutral, narrowly tailored to a real public safety interest, and it must leave open ample alternative channels for that speech to occur. A restriction that limits canvassing to business hours when most people are at work, picking up their kids, or simply not home, does not meet that test. In fact, it eliminates the only times when many voters actually can be reached. Evening and weekend canvassing isn't optional. It's the only realistic opportunities to speak with working adults, seniors caring for grandchildren, shift workers, and families who are not available from nine to five. Removing those hours effectively shuts down the political outreach for grassroots campaigns that depend on talking directly with voters, especially in rural communities like ours, where reaching people takes time and distance. There's also a very real legal risk to the town. Municipalities across the country have been forced to rescind similar ordinances after being challenged for violating the First Amendment. Enacting a rule that is overly restrictive, especially one that eliminates evenings and weekends, exposes the town to be likely legally challenged, which could be costly and unnecessary. Beyond legal concerns, there's something deeper at stake. We want a community where people feel heard, where candidates of all backgrounds, not just the well-funded ones, have a fair chance to talk with their neighbors, where voters are informed, engaged, and welcomed in the democratic process. This proposal will move in the opposite direction. It makes political engagement harder. It reduces transparency and communication, and it sends the message that civic involvement is an inconvenience to be squeezed into business hours. And that's not who we are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Green. I don't think we have anyone else signed up for public comment, but I'm going to ask Chief Estes and the Town Manager, Mike Cochran, to present the second reading of ordinance to enact of the emergency management program for the town of Abingdon.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are we doing tonight, chief?
Fine. I hope you're all doing well. Hope you had a great Thanksgiving.
Yes, sir.
As you know, we're here for our second reading of the ordinance that would allow the town to establish its own emergency management plan and department within the fire department. We have found that we're already doing it. And so, this basically would codify and allow us to do that, and we would be recognized by the state. There's so many things that we would be allowed to do that now we have to go through another entity to do certain things. And this just allows us to be more efficient and effective in protecting our citizens, our visitors, and our businesses here in town.
And it also makes it available for some additional funding.
A lot of grants become available directly to us instead of having to go through another entity. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions for the Town Manager or Chief?
And this actually is the first step of like a six-step process. If you pass this, then you'll see me a few more times tonight.
Well, I've got total faith in you and the fire department. Me as being the mayor here in the town of Abingdon, I trust your judgment. We follow your lead. You do a wonderful job, and everyone at the fire department does a wonderful job as well. And with, you know, talking to Mike Cochran, I feel like this is a step in the right direction. I don't know how the other council members feel about that, but I feel like that you are doing a wonderful job, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
And for those on council, would anyone like to make a motion to amend this?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin.
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson.
Aye. And with that, we will close public comment, and we'll move on next to proclamations. We have two proclamations this evening. The first proclamation will be honoring the First Sergeant Michael Willis, Virginia State Police. And I'm going to ask, I think Amanda has that one, I'm going to ask Amanda to please read that proclamation. And if we could have Officer Willis come up forward front, please, loud and proud. If you'll just stand at the hostess' stand. Amanda's going to read something, and we'll go from there, if that's okay with you, Officer Willis.
Yes, sir.
Whereas First Sergeant Michael Willis began his distinguished career with the Virginia State Police in nineteen ninety-eight, dedicating more than twenty-five years to the service and protection of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas within five years of joining the department, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant and served with honor in both Thackeyer County and Shenandoah County, earning the respect of his peers and community for his professionalism and leadership. And whereas in two thousand and eight, he was promoted to the rank of First Sergeant and assigned to the Bristol, Virginia area office, where his supervisory responsibilities encompassed Washington County, Scott County, the city of Bristol, and most notably, the town of Abingdon. And whereas throughout his tenure, First Sergeant Willis demonstrated an unwavering commitment to public safety, law enforcement collaboration, and community engagement, providing invaluable support to the Abingdon Police Department and its leadership. And whereas his professionalism, integrity, and community-minded approach have strengthened partnerships among local law enforcement agencies, enhancing coordination and cooperation across jurisdictions. And whereas the town of Abingdon, its police department, and neighboring law enforcement partners have benefited greatly from his mentorship, guidance, and dedication to the safety of all residents. And whereas upon his retirement in January two thousand and twenty-six, the Town Council of Abingdon wishes to express its deepest gratitude and appreciation for his years of faithful service and the positive impact he has made on our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town Council of Abingdon, Virginia does hereby recognize and honor First Sergeant Michael Willis for his outstanding service, leadership, and commitment to the town of Abingdon and surrounding communities. Be it further proclaimed that this proclamation be presented to First Sergeant Willis with sincere appreciation and best wishes for a happy and fulfilling retirement.
And I'm going to have Chief Holbrook from the Abingdon Police Department come up and say a couple of words as well, too, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, for that wonderful proclamation. And I just want to reiterate, I want to thank you, Sergeant Willis, or excuse me, First Sergeant Willis, for all that you have done. Becoming a chief in two thousand and twenty, he's always been there. I've called him when you're off. I've called you on weekends, on Sundays, when you've been out sick, and he's always answered the phone. I'm sorry, Ms. Willis. She's put up with some of the evening phone calls. But he's always been there. He's brought the resources whenever we needed them. He's helped us out. I'm sure you all have seen him on Valley Street where we partnered together on that project to try to reduce some speeding there, and various other projects. He's always been there for our agency. So, on behalf of our community, on behalf of our agency, and myself, I want to thank you and wish you a wonderful retirement, sir. Am I supposed to say anything?
If you would like to say it, First Sergeant Willis, you can.
Thank you very much for this honor. Chief Holbrook and I have had a wonderful relationship ever since he became chief, and even before that. You've got some of the best public safety people in the state of Virginia, or I would say across the country, in this town and in this community. You are very lucky, and I am lucky, too, to have worked with them. I appreciate this honor very much. I thank my family for being here. And my coworkers.
Yes.
And I'll leave you with this. I'm ending my career in the town of Abingdon in two thousand and twenty-six. My dad's in the audience. He started his career in nineteen sixty-one in Abingdon. So, he was with the state police for thirty-five years. I'm only doing twenty-eight, so. He wins, but it's ironic that it happens this way, so. Thank you all very much, and I appreciate it.
Well, thank you. We would like to ask your wife and your father, we're going to take some pictures, if it's okay with you. We'd like to have you and your whole family and people up while we present you with your proclamation, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
And the other state officer.
And the other state police officer, if y'all like to come join as well, too. Officer Willis, I don't really know. This lady right here, I know very well. She represents the community well as well, too. How are you doing, sir?
Good. Thank you for putting it in words.
Well, no, sir. Thank you for everything that you've done for this community, your son's done for this community, and your daughter-in-law as well, too. How are you doing, ma'am?
All right. Nice to meet you. Good to see you, old man.
All right.
Good to see you as well, too.
The next proclamation tonight will be a proclamation honoring lifesaving actions of the Abingdon Fire Department firefighters. And I'm going to ask Donna Quetch to read that one for me, please.
Yes. This proclamation honoring the lifesaving action of our firefighters. Whereas the safety and well-being of our community depend upon the unwavering dedication, courage, and professionalism of our firefighters. And whereas during a residential fire in November of two thousand and twenty-two and another similar fire in November of two thousand and twenty-five, the members of the Abingdon Fire Department demonstrated extraordinary skill, swift judgment, and heroic action in response to life-threatening emergencies. And whereas through their coordinated efforts, composure under pressure, and steadfast commitment to the highest standards of public safety, they succeeded in saving the life of a community member in grave danger. And whereas their actions exemplify the finest traditions of the fire service and serve as a powerful reminder of the bravery and sacrifice firefighters display each day. And whereas these incidents further highlight the critical importance of fire safety practices such as maintaining working smoke alarms, developing home escape plans, ensuring proper use of heating equipment, and remaining vigilant during the winter months when residential fire risks increase. And whereas the Abingdon Fire Department continues not only to respond to emergencies, but also to educate the public on fire prevention, helping to safeguard lives and reduce the likelihood of future tragedies. And whereas the entire community is deeply grateful for their service, compassion, and willingness to risk their own safety for the sake of others. Now, therefore, the Abingdon Town Council do hereby recognize and commend the firefighters of the Abingdon Fire Department for their heroic lifesaving actions and for their continued dedication to protecting the people of this community. Let this proclamation stand as a testament to our profound appreciation and enduring respect for their courage and service. And witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the town of Abing to be affixed this first day of December two thousand and twenty-five. Dwayne Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you, Donna. Now, if I could have Chief Estes come up and say a couple of words, please, before we do some photos.
Thanks. I'm not retiring, but I'll be crying because y'all know me. Wind blows, I cry, just the way I am. So, for those watching online, you just get what you get with me. For those watching online, you just get what you get with me, so. I want to ask my firefighters to come up and stand with me.
That's fine.
Y'all come on, y'all a big part of the group.
Come on, and they'll be leaving right as I over, so you're gonna lose most of the crowd, so sorry. You know, it's important to understand that in our great country, we lose about 3,000 people a year to house fires. It is rare to be able to go to a house fire and be able to go in someplace you can't see that is hotter than an oven. At the floor, it's 300 to 400 degrees up ceiling, it's 1,500 degrees. And then you're able to crawl in and go in and find somebody and bring somebody out. That's rare. In my 40-plus years, I can count on both hands how many times it's happened in my career. Not very often. We have the greatest fire department, bar none, period, in this country. We're small, but man, they're awesome. And so tonight, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I have a unit citation, and this is for, I really messed this up back in 2022, I was a new fire chief and I've been an assistant chief, but we really didn't do awards and things for that type. But we had a fire in the middle of town, and this is right after Town Council had approved, and we had added two more full-time firefighters, and one worked from 8A to 4P, and one worked from 4P to midnight. And this call happened right at shift change, so we had extra people. So the first is, this citation is awarded to the members of Rescue Engine 205, Tanker 207, and Utility 210 for outstanding acts and devotion to duty in response to an apartment fire on November 1st, 2022, located on Stone Mill Road, it's here in town. On Tuesday, November 1st, the Fire Department, along with Washington County Lifesaving Crew and Washington County Fire and Rescue, were dispatched to a structure fire, and we were told everyone was out. Chief Estes arrived on scene and advised dispatch of initial findings. I then came back across the radio and told Rescue Engine 205 that we still had someone trapped inside the building. I told them we would have to force entry, which means we'd have to break the door down to get in. It was a really tough door, it was a metal door with a metal frame. It's not like that wood door, that door is easy. Metal frame, metal frame. Metal doors, metal frame are difficult to get in. The door was forced. Chaplain Steve Vaughn and Lieutenant Bobby Fields went in, and they found the victim sitting in the floor. Chaplain Vaughn was able to pick the victim up and remove her from that structure. Engineer Fields, he was then Engineer Fields, he's Lieutenant Fields now, helped him get the person out of the house and then extinguished the fire. The collective effort is a testament to the department's dedication and professionalism, and for outstanding performance of duty, this unit citation will go to Deputy Chief Ray Osborne, Captain Samantha Johnson, Lieutenant Bobby Fields, Lieutenant Tim Estes Jr., Chaplain Vaughn, Engineer Mark Gobble, and posthumously Cameron, because Cameron was at that fire as well. With that, because of that action, we don't issue medals, ever. But tonight, Lieutenant Bobby Fields, based on actions from response to an apartment fire and principally involved in saving the life of another person and whose personal actions were directly responsible for this lifesaving act, I present you with our lifesaving medal. The medals that we wear go on our uniform, and our Class A uniform, when we put our coat and hat and all that stuff on, but that goes with our badge.
Congratulations, Bobby.
And this is to Chaplain Steve Vaughn, based on actions from response to an apartment fire and principally involved in saving the life of another person and whose personal actions were directly responsible for a lifesaving act. I present you with your medal.
Thank you, Chaplain Vaughn. Thank you, sir.
The second call was our most recent call. If you haven't seen my report to council yet, you will. November was extremely busy for us. We had eight fires in November, 14 buildings on fire within those eight fires. We were super, super busy. On November 9th, we had a fire, and we had a rescue at that fire. And this citation is awarded to the members of Chief 202, Chief 209, Engine 204, Tower 203, and Utility 210 for outstanding acts and devotion to duty in response to a house fire on November 9th, 2025, located on Heritage Drive. Heritage Drive is located in the county, it used to be our first due, and we had the restructuring, that's now our second due. But that fire, we were able to respond and be there first. It's not a race, it's never a race, but we were able to be there first because we're closer. On November 9th, the Abingdon Fire Department was dispatched for a structure fire. While units responded, Lieutenant Estes, who went in his personal vehicle, because sometimes that's what we do, because we have to respond, because sometimes we don't have as many people, we have people go in their own vehicles to fires. It's a very good advantage for us to have. Lieutenant Estes advised 204 of the house having heavy fire involvement and unknown if any victims were present. Engine 204 arrived on scene, Lieutenant Fields and Engineer Philippi pulled a 200-foot hose line to the front door, forced entry into the house, and began suppression efforts of the fire. They used a thermal imaging camera, that's our camera that looks through heat, and used to search the rooms adjacent to the fire, and they did not find anything. Deputy Chief Berry, while doing his, we call it a walkabout, walking around the building to see what is going on, to let everybody know what was going on at the fire, advised over the radio that he had found the victim over on the right side of the structure. Lieutenant Estes entered and removed the victim, Lieutenant Fields and Engineer Philippi left the hose line and did another search of the rest of the house to search for more victims, and we were fortunate that the man's wife was not home. The patient was removed from the structure and taken to personnel from Washington County Lifesaving Crew for medical treatment. That person left our local hospital, went to the burn hospital over in North Carolina, and he has some burns, but he's still here. The collective effort is a testament to the department's dedication and professionalism, and for outstanding performance of duty, this unit citation goes to Deputy Chief Ray Osborne, Deputy Chief Marty Berry, Captain Samantha Johnson, Lieutenant Bobby Fields, Lieutenant Tim Estes, Lieutenant Johnny Perdue, Engineer Jeff McVeigh, Engineer Jeremy Philippi, Engineer Mark Gobble, Engineer Jonathan Smith, Firefighter Joey Stanley, Firefighter Cody Pilkington, and Firefighter Logan Stanley. And Deputy Chief Marty Berry, based on actions from response to a house fire and principally involved in saving the life of another person and whose personnel, personal actions were directly responsible for the lifesaving act. I present you with your.
Thank you, Mr. Berry.
Lieutenant Tim Estes Jr., based on actions from response to a house fire and principally involved in saving the life of another person and whose personal actions were directly responsible for the lifesaving act.
Thank you.
I'll say this when I sit down, because you've got a whole lot more important business to do.
I'm gonna say something, just to add on to what you said.
Yes, sir.
Not to hold up a lot of time, but I didn't know the people whose house was on fire, the second one that we were just talking about, but I knew their neighbors. I worked with the lady that is neighbors adjacent to the house that was on fire. Yes, it actually brings me to tears almost to say, she said you guys showed up to show out. Y'all done what y'all supposed to do, in a nice neat orderly fashion. No one was injured. And she says, by the way the house looks now today, like, not that much damage. And that was all on account of you all getting there, solving the problem, taking care of the problem. So I just wanted you all to know that the community speaks very highly of the Abingdon Police Department. And we know that you all work diligently in the county, as well as the town. And Chief, me and you've talked about this, no one's unanswered. If you get a call, it doesn't matter if you're here in the town of Abingdon, Washington County, you guys respond. And I want to thank you all for y'all's presence and you all's response to this community, the town of Abingdon, and Washington County.
Thank you, I appreciate that. In November, we ran from the Russell County line to the South Holston Lake. Now, way before I started, Crowe started. Crowe's our senior man, Crowe's been here for 58 years on the Fire Department.
They had fire trucks back then?
They had, it looked like Fred Flintstone. But back then, when he first started, your Fire Department ran from the Russell County line to the Sullivan County line, it was the only Fire Department in the center of this county. That's before Green Springs, before Clinch Mountain, before Bromley Gap. And they ran the whole center, there was only like five Fire Departments back then. And, you know, and I'll say what I said at the beginning, you have the best Fire Department. We have things that we need and want, and we'll come and ask you through the right channels on these days for those things, and we'll see if we can get them. And if we can, that's great, if we can't, we'll still be the best Fire Department, period. And I believe that, so. Thank you for your time and attention, and thank you for allowing us to have these awards here, and don't forget Friday, if you're coming Friday, you've got an invitation, come on.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
We'd like to take a little picture with everyone, if that's okay. Sir Crowe, keep up the good work.
Crowe been in my life since second grade. Football, baseball, fire.
This is the man, sir, thank you. Keep up the good work, sir.
Thank you all. Good to see you.
Hey, buddy.
Good to see you, I said hello. I've seen you, buddy.
I've sat here thinking 1980s. Sitting that time.
Good to see you. You're my candy butter. It's a little hard, you know.
Chief, good to see you, thank you. I know, I saw that.
I like that.
Next, we are going to move on to public hearing. Seems like we're back down to the norm now. The crowds, the suspense has made everyone sick, they had to leave, so. We have one thing on public hearing today, and that's gonna be a public hearing to propose zoning map amendment to rezone tax map ID 126-1-12A, split zone low-density residential District R-1 and high-density residential District R-3 to high-density residential District R-3, TB, D, Coming Street, Abingdon, Virginia. And I'm gonna ask Gabe to come up and explain this to us, if that's okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Gabe.
Right, town of Abingdon, Senior Planner. So yes, Derek Lester, applicant, and Biscomcy, and Ann M. Ray, owner, have requested approval of a zoning map amendment to rezone tax map number 126-1-12A from low-density residential District R1 and high-density residential District R3 to just solely high-density residential District R3. It's located on Coming Street, there's no building there, so that's why it's to be determined, there's no address, and it's within the town of Abingdon. The request to rezone requires a zoning map amendment, therefore requiring recommendation approval from the Plan Commission and final approval from Town Council. Some background, the zoning map amendment application was submitted to rezone tax map number 126-1-12A. Currently, the undeveloped property consists of non-forced and enforc'd areas. The parcel is split zoned between low-density and high-density residential. And the applicant wishes to rezone to solely R3 to allow a uniform set of standards throughout. Access to site will continue to be Coming Street. So when we wanted, when somebody wants to do rezoning staff, we have to look at specific variables and if that meets it. So currently, the undeveloped property consists of non-forced and enforc'd areas, the parcel is split zoned with R1 and R3, and the applicant just requests to solely be zoned R3. The findings are the following. One, consider the proper relationship of such amendment to the entire zoning plan. A rezone of the parcel from R1 and R3 to solely R3 would eliminate an existing split zone parcel within the town of Abingdon and extend the already existing R3 district further south towards the town limit running along Coming Street. Two, consider the integrity and validity of the zoning districts described in this chapter. The parcel will be subject to the required R3 minimum lot area, minimum frontage, minimum yard setbacks, open space requirements, and all other applicable requirements set forth by Chapter 44, Land Use, Article 8, which is the community design standards for any future development that may happen on that property. Tax map number 126-1-12A has a square footage of approximately 119,790 square feet, meeting the requirement for square footage for all dwelling types allowed in the R3 district, and has a frontage of approximately 368 square feet, meeting the requirement for frontage for all dwelling types allowed in the R3 district. Three, avoid isolated unplanned spot zoning changes in the zoning district map. The adjoining parcels to the northwest are zoned R3, so this is not spot zoning. Again, it's just a extension of the already existing R3 district. Four, recognize that a certain element of stability is desired in land use controls, but conditions and standards will change. If rezoned, tax map number 126-1-12A would no longer be split zoned, creating a more stable parcel governed by one set of standards instead of two. If rezoned, it may become developed depending on the type of dwelling or dwellings proposed upon official submission of plans. However, a large portion of the property is steep and financially could be undevelopable in a sense. It would require a lot of money to take out a big portion of the hill that's right there. The existing enforc'd area will remain a natural buffer for any future development to properties adjacent found to be less intensive in use. Five, consider the right of citizens to be treated reasonably. A public notice was made for public consumption. Adjoring property owners were notified of the applicant's request via certified mailer. A notice was posted on the tax map on the parcel a week before the meeting date, and all other requirements pursuant to Virginia Code Section 15.2-2204 were adhered to. And the sixth one is, just to make sure it conforms with our comprehensive plan, it does. We did, and the Planning Commission approved the request as presented, six to zero, and we had one absentee at that meeting. We had one person put in a document against the rezone, but that was heard by the Plan Commission, and that's in your package. So if you have any questions about that, I can answer them now, and the applicant's also here if you have any questions for them.
Does anyone have any questions for Gabe? Or the applicant? I didn't have anyone that was signed up for public hearing, so. If no one has any questions for Gabe, or...
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, just go ahead and open it for public hearing and close it, if nobody comes forward.
All right, I'd like to now open up public hearing. If anyone would like to come forward, please state your first and last name and your mailing address. AKA your nickname, too.
So I'm Derek Lester, 152 East Main Street, our office out there, AKA Gator. But yeah, so me and Rob's got this property under contract, like, just to reiterate what Gabe was saying, he does such a great job, but it's split zoned right now. The developable part of the property is zoned R3, but those zoning maps are not like surveyed in any type of way, so there's not like, there's not pins out there or anything that can like define that this is the line that's R3, and this is the line that's residential. So just doing a uniform zoning of the parcel just, you know, gives us one set of rules to follow, and there's no, you know, gray area as far as the density use. Because each zoning classification, as you know, has its own kind of rules. Cause each, each zoning classification, as you know, has its own kind of rules as far as minimal lot size, frontage, et cetera. So, just rezoning it all R three would just make it a cleaner project, so that's what, that's what we're aiming to do. Joe, y'all got any questions?
Anyone have any questions for? Thank you, Gator. Would anyone else like to come present or come forward for a public hearing? If not, we will close public hearing now. Now we'll move on to resolutions. We have a couple of resolutions this evening. Um, the first resolution being a resolution for zoning map amendment to rezone tax map ID one-two-six dash one dash twelve A. Split zone, low-density residential district R one and high-density residential district R three to high-density residential district R three, to be determined, Coming Street Avenue, Virginia. Would someone like to make that motion, or do you think that we need further assistance on this?
I'll, uh, I'll make the motion to, uh, adopt this rezoning. It was considered by the Planning Commission, and, uh, as Gabe told us, it was unanimous of those present at the Planning Commission to approve it and recommend it to council, so I'll make that motion here.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I think Donna seconded that. Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillian?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
Next will be a resolution adopting National Incident Management System. Chief Estes with the Abington Fire Department.
Just let the chief set up here.
Yeah, I know, we just think.
Hi, again, um, thank you, Mayor. So, this is just another step in becoming an emergency management town. Uh, we are required, uh, the town is required to adopt a resolution where we adopt the National Incident Management System as the way we operate for emergencies. This came about after nine eleven, a few years after, and so, the fire department, we've been doing it since that started. The police department does it, we have trained almost all of our department heads already in this. Mr. Cochran's already had this, he painfully sat through it, he didn't have to do it again, so he's very thankful for that. But this is just another step, uh, to become the emergency management town, which, and this will be included in the emergency operations plan if you adopt this resolution. Would you like me to read it?
I don't think you have to read it, I think everybody's familiar with it.
Okay.
Are we, Amanda, are you familiar with that? Vice Mayor, you familiar with that?
I am.
Donna as well? I don't think that we would.
Thank you.
We're gonna spare you on this one. But, um, someone would like to make?
I would like to make that motion to adopt that resolution.
Second. Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillian?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
Third, again, we got Chief Estes on the hot seat. There's gonna be a resolution adopting an emergency operation plan for the Town of Abington. And we have the Police Chief, Tim Estes, here to explain that.
Fire Chief, I'll take Police Chief.
Fire Chief, I'll say, excuse me, excuse me.
That just makes, that just makes me.
We haven't got enough Indians to be chief stuff.
That makes me just a few points not as smart, maybe.
If I can't get chief added to my status.
So, uh, in your, in your packet, you had a copy of the proposed emergency operations plan. It used to be emergency operations plan were inches thick. Really, really thick, because it was an all-hazard plan that tried to cover everything. We now don't, we don't do all-hazard planning anymore, we do risk-based analysis, and we determine what plan we need. So that's why our plan is small and concise, and to the point in what we need to do, and it gives us a lot of flexibility in how to handle emergencies. So this is the last step before we send a letter to the state, is the adoption of the emergency operations plan. And you'll notice in the resolution, uh, it does say that you, by adopting this resolution, you appoint the town manager as a director of emergency management, because we have to have a director, and there's only two localities in Virginia that a fire chief can be director, and that's by state code. Everywhere else, it's the chief administrative officer, or chief elected officer, and most of people, most localities take the chief administrative, so the town manager. And it also, uh, allows him to, uh, appoint the coordinator of emergency management, which the town has done that already before. So this just codifies that, so, it's really the same thing that you just did. Happy to read this one, too, if you would like me to.
No, sir, I think we're well aware.
At least this, this one is shorter, but, uh, it, and what this does, every four years, if you adopt this, every four years, I'll be back with the emergency operations plan as we revise that, and then you, you will have to adopt the plan every four years. That's part of the process of being an emergency management town, of being an EM entity, so.
Would someone like to make a motion to this res- resolution adopting an emergency operation plan?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillian?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mary Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. And, and so what this will allow us to do, Mr. Cochran and I will, uh, the letter's already drafted, and we will sign the letter, and we'll send that letter off to, uh, the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to, to get officially recognized. And, and thank you for your trust in us, allowing us to do this, because it really is, it's, it's, it's a good thing for us, it really is. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We have. We've been working on this for like a while. Yeah. About two years or so, I guess. I think that Mike Cochran, you do a wonderful job, and Chief Estes does a good job as well, too, so.
He gets by.
I have, I have no problems with that. So we have no first reading of ordinance, we do have a couple of, uh, well, we've already taken care of that. So, we don't have any second readings tonight, we've channeled that till the next meeting. Um, no considerations of bids, which moves us now to new business. Um, we have a presentation of the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five financial audit from the Town of Abington, and we have Brown Edwards and Company here to present that.
Hello, uh, my name is David Elkins, I'm with Brown Edwards and Company, I'm a director out of our Bristol office. Um, and I believe in front of you, you all should have the annual financial report. Um, we've just recently concluded the audit of the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Uh, and I'm just gonna kinda go over a little bit of the highlights of it, we won't get into a whole lot of details of the report, but just kinda hit some of the highlights, um, that you may have, uh, we'll look at, and then answer any questions that you may have. But, in the actual financial report, page one is the most important part of it, that is the independent auditors' report. Um, it states that, in our opinion, these financial statements are materially correct, um, and that they represent the financial standings of the Town of Abington. Uh, we have issued what's called an unmodified opinion, a clean opinion. Um, you're always looking to get an unmodified opinion, uh, when it comes to these audits here. Um, it goes through, uh, the auditor's responsibilities, the management's responsibilities of the financial statement, um, and just, there's a lot, a lot, a lot of technical wording in there. One thing it does mention, that I'll talk about a little bit further later, is there was a change in accounting principle this year related to a new standard that came out, uh, from the Government Standards Board. Uh, that's not anything that changed related to your own policies or anything, that's just a, an accounting change that some new additional rules came out this year that had to be accounted for in a slightly different way than they had been in the past. Um, if, page one is the statement of net position. Uh, this is presented on the accrual basis, this is the type of accounting that you're used to seeing if you're looking at a for-profit company. Inside of that, uh, you've got eighty point five million in total assets for the year. That is down about three point eight million from last year, but most of that relates to, last year you had the unspent ARPA funds, uh, that were about three point eight million dollars, uh, there was an asset and a liability for those. Uh, the cash has been spent on projects this year, and the liability has also went away on those. Uh, so, um, the net position is, um, up about seven point two million from last year. Uh, the total net position this year is fifty-six point three million dollars. Uh, so that's, that's a, that's a solid net position. Of that amount, uh, you've got about forty-three point eight that's sitting in net investment and capital assets, so kind of a non-spendable amount, that's your infrastructure, your buildings, equipment, that type of thing, uh, net of any outstanding related debt that, that exists related to those. Um, but your unrestricted amount is twelve point three million dollars for this year, so, overall, I think that you've got a really, really solid net position, and I think everything's kinda going in the direction that you would wanna expect it to. Um, like I said, there, there was a seven point two million dollar increase this year. About three point eight million of that was also recognizing the revenue from that ARPA fund. Typically, this report would have what we call the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards, which would show that amount being expended. Um, I'll, when we have to do what's called a single audit, it is guided by the federal compliance supplement, which typically the federal government puts out pretty close after June, like in July, August. They actually released it the day before Thanksgiving. Uh, so, our report will be coming, related to testing the federal grants. Uh, we've actually done the testing, uh, it's just gotta go through our review process now, but our firms probably got a hundred plus of those lined up in a queue. Uh, and until that federal compliance supplement was released, we were not allowed to issue a single audit. Uh, the federal government said you cannot until a final version is out. Um, so, that is a compliance report that is typically in here, along with the Schedule of Findings and Question Cost, that is not in here. Um, we will be issuing that at a later date. Be happy to come and meet with the board again, if there's, if, if that's something you all would want. Uh, I don't anticipate any issues coming from that single audit, uh, but until it gets through the final review, we can't say for, for sure that that would be the process. But it is, it is our, the testing's mostly done, it's just gotta go through the review process. Uh, but, it's mainly the, the big ARPA grant, uh, that had been there the last couple of years. The, the remaining parts of it getting spent are what triggered having a single audit. I don't know what the town's plans are going forward as far as federal funds, but the, the, all that ARPA fund is gonna fall off next year, so you all may fall below that threshold of being required to have a single audit. Uh, currently, that threshold is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it is going up to a million dollars. Uh, so if you don't have at least a million dollars in federal expenditures next year, then you wouldn't need a single audit.
Yeah, we've got a couple, like, the trustful repairs and things that will exceed that amount, so, we'll probably have it for a year or two, we'll see.
Okay, uh, so, uh, but that's just kinda, that's, like I said, that is something that's typically in this report that is not in there, but it will be coming. Uh, we'll definitely, uh, make sure that council, as I said, I'd be happy to come discuss that if it's something you all would want, or, uh, can just get it to the Finance Department and they can pass it along to you all. Page six is the governmental funds, uh, statements there. The general fund had an overall unassigned fund balance of twelve point nine million, roughly. That's about a one point nine million dollar increase from last year, so I think that's always, you know, uh, good to see that unassigned amount kinda going forward there. You will look, you will see that that, that American Rescue Plan Act Fund has, has zeros in the balance sheet this year, so that fund will go away next year as all the amounts were expended this year. On page ten is Exhibit seven, that is your budget actual for your general fund. Um, as you can see, uh, the revenues came in a little bit below, uh, budget, but, overall, everything kinda came, came in with a solid amount related to what your, what your budget actual was there. You know, you're, you're in a healthy position there as well. Exhibit eight and nine and ten are your information related to your water sewer fund. Always like to look at the cash flow related to that one, see that on page thirteen. You had net cash provided of a little over one point seven million from your operating activities, uh, and you had net cash used of about two point one million, uh, related to capital and financing. Uh, there, there was some additional, uh, debt funding coming through, uh, in, in the sewer fund. There was a new debt slash grant portion coming through there. Uh, but overall, you had a net decrease in cash in the sewer fund of about three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, but again, I still think, uh, that overall, that, that fund is doing well, uh, as well. You did have a change in net position of about two point one million dollars, overall. Uh, there, there's some pretty large receivables sitting out there for some grants that were coming through there toward, towards the year end. But, beginning with page fourteen are the footnotes to the financials. There's lots of detailed information about capital assets, about the debt, about your pension plan, your other post-employment benefit plans there. I won't get into detail of the notes, but there, there's a lot of information in there. Uh, there's also some required supplementary information, uh, in there, which relates to the pension and OKP plans as well. But, our other report related to this is on page seventy-nine, that is the Independent Auditors' Report on Internal Control. Like I said, as I mentioned, we typically have an independent auditors' report on compliance with the major programs, which will be issued in a separate report. Um, and, but we had no, no findings, uh, related to the internal control of, of the, the town. Uh, no, uh, no adjustments were made, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Uh, but, overall, like I said, it's a ve- very clean audit, uh, I think that, you know, the town is do- doing well. Uh, I think your, uh, your Finance Department is, is great to work with, uh, especially Steve and Amanda. Always quick to answer any of our questions that we do have. But, be happy to answer any questions specifically on the report, if anybody has any?
No, sir, thank you.
And then, I will quickly touch on just the other document that you have here, the uh, required communication with those charged with governance. Uh, accounting standards require that we communicate with those charged with governance at the beginning of an audit and at the end of an audit. You would have received the other communication at the beginning of the audit, said if you have any questions or concerns, to reach out to us. Uh, but at the, at the end of it, um, like I said, we just note what we think are the significant aspects of the accounting principles. It does mention that, uh, implementation of this GASPY one oh one, which is the new standard. Basically, what that standard did is previously, you were only recording amounts that were paid out if an employee left, so it was mainly vacation time. Sick time was typically not incorporated into that. The standard said that even if they don't get their sick time paid out when they leave, if they're gonna take it at any point in time, and you're gonna pay it out while they're still employed, then you need to factor it into the liability. So, overall, I think that increased liabilities between four and five hundred thousand dollars, uh, this year, just implementing that standard. But again, wasn't anything that changed related to the town, uh, or your, your policies or anything, it was just a implementation of a new standard there. Uh, says that we encountered no, uh, difficulties when we were performing the audit. It does list out some uncorrected misstatements, and one of these is just related to the implementation of that GASPY one oh one, we just flowed the change through the current year. You could've done a prior period adjustment and restated the beginning balances, but we deemed that it was not material to the current year financial, so it was just flowed through the current year. If, the ending numbers are exactly what they would've been, whichever method would've been taken. Uh, there was also an entry related to some credit amounts in AR, so if a customer had overpaid, technically you would owe them money, again, no bottom line effect, uh, just balance sheet style presentation. Um, and then there was something that was related to construction in progress and a payable, again, no, no bottom line there. We had no disagreements with management. Uh, again, like I said, like, I think, you know, your, your Finance Department was, was a pleasure to work with. We, we did some work remotely, we did, we were here on-site several times, uh, they were always good to work with, no, no matter what time. But, um, we will get this filed with the APA, and the, uh, the transmittal, uh, information will be sent over to the Finance Department, I think tomorrow we should be sending that over, so they can get that signed, we can get all that info, information to flow as well.
Donna, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Amanda, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Mike Cochran, Cam, do you all have any questions?
No, I just, uh, we, uh, Finance does a great job for us, we appreciate it, and they do, um, I don't know what it was like before Steve got here, but he retires in about forty days.
It's only countdown, I know that.
Yeah, give or take a couple hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, uh, yeah, he certainly has, uh, has helped usher in some really clean financials. Yeah, he certainly has helped usher in some really clean financials, so it's good. So, thank you.
Yeah, I'll say, do wish him well in retirement, but I think with Amanda, I think you all are still...
I think he's going to consult with Ron and Edwards, we'll find out.
So, but, and I think you all will get the form filed that says we were here.
Yeah.
Get the, did the presentation and the notary and everything will get submitted to the state, and we will get that compliance report out. Like I said, it's just, there's a backlog of triple digits kind of lined up throughout the whole firm, and there's only a handful of people that specialize in that compliance work. I don't mess with the federal compliance stuff myself.
Yeah, love you.
But we will get that out. Steve said he would like to be able to try to get it out before he leaves, so I'll pass that on up the ladder there, so.
Great.
But, again, we thank you for the opportunity to work with the town again. Hope to continue working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion regarding the reappointment of Kenny Schuman and Scott Wilson to the Planning Commission for a certain period of time to continue work for the town's comprehensive plan, and we have Vice Mayor Wayne Austin speak by that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This came to the Planning Commission for discussion. I guess we've discussed it the last two meetings or so. The members of the Planning Commission have been divided and assigned various tasks in terms of reworking the town's comprehensive plan. Each Planning Commission member has two areas or departments, whatever you want to call them, to review and to discuss any changes, amendments, or modifications that might be necessary for the town's comprehensive plan. Kenny Schuman serves as the chairman of the Planning Commission, and Scott Wilson, who was Planning Commission member for a number of years, they have, for lack of a better term, timed out, that is, that they are no longer eligible to be reappointed for a full term on the Planning Commission. They're ineligible, in other words. However, the Planning Commission, and particularly these two individuals, have expressed a desire that if it is possible, that for a set period of time, they'd like to continue on the Planning Commission to complete the comprehensive plan review with modifications. And we had asked Mr. Bell to take a look at that and see what the legality of ever being able to do that are.
Yes, sir. And there aren't any restrictions. I think what we found is that was just sort of the protocol and just what had always been done, I think probably to get more people involved and not exhaust people for observing for too long. So there isn't any legal restriction on reappointing them. Mr. Cristofori and I sort of discussed about how long he thought that process was going to take, and it looks like he's getting ready to tell you, but I think we should probably err on the side of caution if we're going to do, if you guys are going to do that, to do, I think Gabe thinks it's going to take about eight months for that process, but do it at least a year for them to be reappointed. Now, I know that you guys had discussed a sort of limited period of time for them. I don't think there's any restriction to appointing them to full terms if you were so inclined or they were so inclined, but at the least probably would do a year, and there isn't any problem with doing that if Council votes.
You think, yes, please. I'm sorry.
I kind of let Cam just run with there. But, so yeah, we're looking to update our comp plan, and we have a good comp plan that was done in 2020. We want to update it every five years. We're going to be at that five years at the end of this year. Getting up to that before we contract with somebody to help us do the update, each Planning Commission member was assigned a specific chapter in our comp plan, so some is infrastructure, some is history, art, and all that kind of stuff. So instead of having members get invested and meet with staff and the boards that are associated with those and then have to come off and then put new people in, it would just kind of hurt the flow of the project and maybe even be detrimental to the projects we would get. So that's why we thought it would be beneficial and making sure with Cam that everything was legally okay to do, to have Mr. Schuman and Mr. Wilson be on there for probably another year, because really it's just an update. We're not looking to do a full reroy, so probably eight months to a year would be adequate, I would think.
So to expire December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six?
Yeah, I would say so.
That'd be, yeah, it'd be about thirteen months. You think that would be sufficient?
Yeah, because at this point now, we're getting the RFP ready to go out and everything, and you got, and the Planning Commission members will be meeting with the boards and staff that are associated with those chapters, just kind of an intro to be like, hey, we're here to listen what the needs are, and then report those back and everything. So I would say probably, yeah. Probably sound good.
I think that a year is a nice compromise. I think if that's okay with you all.
I'd like to make a motion then that we reappoint on an interim basis Kenny Schuman and Scott Wilson to the Planning Commission for a period of time to end on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six.
Do I have a second?
Oh.
A second by Donna, AKA Amanda as well, too, but any further discussion? Kim, if you'll please call and roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Now, we've got considerations of dates for January through July of two thousand and twenty-six for council meetings, and we got Ms. Kim Kingsley, the clerk, to take that one.
Yes, sir. I apologize, too many pages.
Take your time, Kim.
I went through the, started in January, we're looking at the first Monday of the month, so we did those. I know Mr. Cochran said that he does have a conflict with the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-six date that I proposed, so were you, most people are okay with the other dates that was proposed?
I'm good with all of them except January twenty-second. But that's a mid-month meeting. If there's an alternative, we can look at it. If not, I just won't be able to be here that long, but all the others are good.
I don't have any problems with any of the dates on there. Amanda, do you have any?
I don't have any, but I just was wondering, I know we probably haven't looked at the school calendar, but April sixth is Easter Monday, and so I don't know if kids are out of school, if that would be a problem for people traveling, since it's right in the hills of that weekend. I can Google the school calendar quickly if that helps.
Go for it, Amanda.
I have no plans, but I just thought that might be a conflict.
I think that's a good observation, so if you could check that out right quick and we'll see what we got.
I am, I just like...
Yeah, on the June eighteenth is my daughter graduates high school, so I'm obligated to take her on.
You better believe it.
Yes, yes. Would you like to look at January the twenty-first, it's a Wednesday, or January the twentieth for the mid-month?
Twenty-first works for me. Does it work for you?
That work for you, Wayne?
Wednesday. He was trying to take me to Washington, Carolina, State.
Oh, wait a minute, December...
I think she's talking about, you're talking about January.
January.
Talking about January, Wayne.
Yeah, yeah. I'm actually not available that entire week, January nineteenth through the twenty-third. But again, it's a mid-monthly meeting, it's not absolutely urgent. I could be, if we moved it to the twenty-eighth, but that puts pretty close to...
February the second.
The February second meeting.
Yes, schools are closed that Monday and Tuesday, the sixth and the seventh.
So there may be a lot of people out of town since that's a holiday weekend. I don't know if we want to look at the next, the thirteenth.
That's in April, right?
Mm-hmm.
What we didn't want to do...
Or even move it to the seventh, because people would probably be back, I don't know.
Well, yeah, it's Wednesday, Thursday. You know.
I mean, we could leave it and people may not be traveling, but just to throw that out there.
All right, so let's start with the top first. Let's start with January first and then work our way down. So Vice Mayor Austin wouldn't be present for the twenty-second meeting, right? That whole week you'll be gone.
Right, right.
Do we want to change that date, or do we want to...
Yes, we certainly can if you're, we can look at the week prior to, which would be the fifteenth, that'd be ten days after the first meeting, but...
January fifteenth?
Yes.
Yeah, that works.
Let's change that one to January the fifteenth, if that's okay with everyone on the council. I know Derek is not present, but we will get the word to him if that's okay on that one, Kim. Yes, ma'am.
The next date would be February the second, the first Monday?
Yep.
And then the mid-month, February the seventeenth?
Yep.
March the second, the first Monday?
Yep.
And then March the nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Propose maybe April the seventh instead of the sixth to give people additional time?
I think that we should do that.
Seventh's good.
April the seventh, can we change the sixth to the seventh?
April the twenty-third?
April the seventh. The twenty-third, I don't think we have any conflicts with the twenty-third, so I think we're good with that.
Okay.
And then we've got something with the Mike Cochran, and that is the eighteenth.
June eighteenth, yes.
And how long are you going to be, if you don't mind me asking, Mike Cochran, are you going to be going for the week, or?
Yeah, it's, hold on, let me get on my calendar. Sorry, my short eyes are...
Take your time.
Eighteenth to twenty-fourth, and that's our sale date, so it's seventeenth, I can fly down into the twenty, yeah, I'll be gone, seventeen to the twenty-fifth.
What's, what is the sixteenth in that month of April?
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
June is...
June sixteenth.
Can we do June sixteenth, Mike Cochran?
Sure, sure. Yeah, I apologize, but you guys go to high school.
No apology.
You know how that goes.
It's important.
So June the eighteenth will be June the sixteenth, right?
Yeah.
All right.
It's four years of college payment.
Yeah. I don't think we have any problems with the July the sixth, two thousand and twenty-six, and we don't have any problems with July the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-six, right?
Good.
And this is kind of all in regards to what Derek has going on as well, too. He's the only one that's not present, that we'll need to get a revised schedule out to him, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Do we have any other questions for Kim or someone?
The, this mid, wait a minute, mid-month for...
December?
December. It's the eighteenth, if we have anything, yes. Okay. It was one of those dates if we need it. You'll let us know. Yeah.
And I saw the dates for, I guess all of them are for, no, one of them's for Mr. Cochran. But, yeah, I think that's great. I encourage you guys to participate in all those things.
You ever sat through them, you wish you didn't.
Better you than me, it's a...
So do I have anyone that would like to make a motion on the consideration of the dates from January to July the twenty-sixth?
Also, I do.
Two thousand and twenty-six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further questions? Kim and Phil, please call and roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Next, we have a consideration of proposed revisions to the Town's Freedom of Information Act fee, schedule, and associated cost recovery practices, and we have Laura and Mike Cochran to discuss that. Hey, Ms. Laura, how are you doing?
Yeah, how are you doing?
Good to see you.
Yeah, here as the FOIA officer today.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, this, just the introduction of it is, one of the things I try to do is let's see what people, you know, the time that people take on stuff, and the police department, the chief's hiding in the back, but they answer, I just got their numbers today, but, you know, they've done six hundred and fifteen requests so far this year, doesn't include December, and they get hit a lot with them. But they're dealing with, now they get digital media, and we're getting some incredibly expansive requests that come in, and it's, some of them are really long. I mean, she answered one earlier this year that took eleven hundred pages.
And took at least three days of town staff time to just complete everything involved, gathering the documents, going through and redacting the documents and such.
Well, what was the cost of that, to the person?
That one actually, so one of the reasons we're requesting this change is, the first, originally the first five were free. So that one was a free charge because it was one of their first five in the calendar year request. So moving forward, we'd like to alternate that a little bit, because if, after five, you would be charged for any of the FOIA requests. But if we alternate a little bit the way we're looking, if you take fifteen minutes to get one page of documents, it should be free, it doesn't take that much time. But if it takes us eight plus hours in the day, we want to start charging the costs that are incurred by the town, to be a little bit more fair and to get back the town incurred costs.
And then, so right now, the, because the way it's worded with five, well, five is all, if it's five and it's just a copy of a police report or a copy of a record, that's, that would make more sense. When you say it's five, because the chief is dealing with one right now, where they're asking, it's just a really overly broad, open-ended thing, and they want copies of video, well, video will have personally identified information, it'll have stuff with juveniles in there, all of that's got to get redacted, and someone's got to watch it to know what to redact. I mean, it takes hours and hours and hours to do, and then, like, some organizations, the larger ones, will have a full-time FOIA person, that's all they do. Laura's primary job is grants, and then she does this as a collateral duty, and then the police station, I don't want to speak on that, but Chief Kim, you know, he only has, he has some of that.
Yeah, we, for us, we have myself and Carrie, who's our administrative coordinator. So if she gets a pretty lengthy request, that takes her away from a lot of her normal duties. She has quite a number of normal duties, keeping up with all of our records, all of our data, and even answering the phone call during the day. So she'll sit there and watch these videos. We are fortunate, and that's due to Mr. Cochran for providing us with some software that will speed up the process with redacting the videos, so we can put the video in the software and it'll help us blur out, you know, even their computer in their car, well, it's a class one misdemeanor if some of that data is released, so we have to blur that out. So that's helped us tremendously on speed things up, but overall, it's, it can be very time-consuming for us.
Is it primarily insurance companies and attorneys or claims that we have to do?
We get a lot of that. One company will mail in requests almost daily for different reports.
Okay.
And we'll, you know, fill the requests and we'll package it up, they'll send a prepaid envelope, we'll package it up and send it back to them. Those happen quite frequently. You know, when people are involved in things, they like to come and get a copy of their report, especially traffic crashes.
Yeah.
So those are a large quantity, and then you'll have some that wants the incident report and all corresponding data with it with body cameras. And we want to be transparent, of course, and we want to allow them to get this data, but we also wanted to, you know, get our cost back for doing so, for taking that time to do that and not take a loss with the town by...
Like, if you think about some of the incidents in a car, you've got a body camera, an in-car camera, and then you've got your body cams, and you might have two or three cops on the scene, so now you've got force, I mean, there's a lot more to it than just sit and pause and, you know, it's very, very time-consuming, and we want to be transparent, but we also have to make sure that we don't unleash things that shouldn't be released. And so it takes time. The current policy that we have in place is just as, you know, it's, we'll never, it's not a money-making venture. We're attempting to probably two-thirds break even, but we won't even break even because we're not really charging what the employee rate is or what their benefit rates are. because we're not really charging what the employee rate is or what their benefit rates are. We're discharging their hourly rate. And, you know, the downside is, is like in Laura's case, you know, she deals with grants quite a bit, and there are grants that have filing and all this stuff. And the... You have to get... That stuff has to get done. Well, if you spend eight hours on a FOIA, or in one case, 24 hours on a FOIA, the other work doesn't get done, or you got to work overtime in order to get it done. So it really puts us in an odd spot. But by modifying the policy, our intent is to make sure that if someone has a crash, they can get a copy of the report. If, you know, they lose an item, they need a report, they get a report. And the first 15 minutes are free, and the first five, what's it, five black-and-white pages are free. And that way, your average citizen that's going to interact and needs a copy of the report, it's for them, that's fine. But we do have ones where we get hit with overly, what I would call onerous requests, where, I mean, I don't know how many hours you've got in the one you're dealing with right now, but they're quite lengthy. And so, you know, transparency's there, but we also... Sometimes it becomes almost like a fishing expedition where, you know, we've had some requests that were really, really long, and based on subsequent requests, I doubt the first request was even read. And it's just like, you know, it gets to be a... It's just a taxing on staff. And so requests would be as to revise the policy as shown in your packet.
Do you expect complaints when we put this in? Do you think that people will complain?
It's in keeping with what a lot of other organizations already do. I think ours was probably a far more generous than a lot of them were. Because we checked on that with... Let Kim check with the clerk spokes.
Let me ask the... It looks to me like, and I could be totally wrong, but it looks like currently... And you mentioned that really long one that you finished, 1,100 pages or so, that the previous policy said that the individual got the first five free.
I believe that's what it was.
So it doesn't matter how long those five are. And now this new one, it's only five pages that they give free.
In the first 15 minutes it takes us to do that.
Right. But it goes from the first five being free to the first five pages being free. So in that one, that 1,100-page document, the fee would have been fairly significant.
Yeah, it'll be printed as well. If we send electronically, we won't charge. We don't charge for the paper.
Right.
The way the law's written, if it's going to be... We do an estimate, and if it's going to be over $200, then tell the applicant it may be over $200, and do you want it to continue? And the FOIA council has a lot of literature on it, and we've looked at all that in trying to come up with a compromise on this. Is the first order is to try to negotiate with the requister and come up with something that they're looking for. A lot of times, people don't know exactly what it is that they're asking for, and so staff interacts with people every day on those. But to your question, yeah, sure, if they wanted to get all 1,100 pages, then it would have cost a lot. My guess is if that interactive process had worked in that particular one, they would say, well, maybe 100 pages is enough.
Marry your folks.
Maybe start.
Yeah, and sometimes you get this really broad net, where a lot of times, if I get those questions, I'll be like, okay, what is it you're looking for? And then try and help them get what they want, because that's our goal, is to get them what they want. But when someone comes in with a really, really broad one, and they don't really tell you what they want, then you have to answer what they get, you know, answer what they're requesting and try and work with it as much as we can. I mean, because it's just, it's in everybody's best interest to get them what they're asking for.
I didn't realize y'all had that many.
Oh, it's a lot. And, yeah, the police, yeah.
So in 2023, we had 636 requests, and we released 692 documents. 2024, we had 576 requests, releasing 637 documents. And in 2025, we have 615 requests, and we've released 784 documents.
And that doesn't include December, because we just started.
And that's without December, yeah.
Yeah, it's not slowing down is what it sounds like, so.
And when you say documents, that's not pages. That's a document that might have two or three pages with it.
Correct, yes. So like an incident report would have only five pages. That's one.
Gotcha.
We haven't taken the time to hog every page.
Right.
Just the hours that we spent on it.
And as the chief mentioned, we did... We obtained some software that allows to speed up the process. But while it will be faster, it's still not fast, you know? So, you know, technology's great, but you still need to make sure it was right, you know? It'll do a lot of things automatically, but you also have to... It still requires labor, and then the software wasn't cheap either, but neither's their time, so.
I kind of think it's a step in the right direction, if you ask me. You know, with what we're spending taxpayers' money on, you know, people's salary and them doing that work. I just feel like that, you know, you should get compensated a little bit for it. I think it's a step in the right direction. I don't know how you all feel about that.
Yeah, you know, as Mr. Cochran says, we're not trying to make money. We're just trying to reduce our loss as a result of that. I think code says a reasonable fee, doesn't it, Ken?
Yeah.
Not to exceed the actual cost.
And they're charging sort of the lowest base rate of somebody who's working on it. And they're not, even if the chief is working on something, we're not charging his hourly rate. And as Mike said, we're not allowed to and wouldn't charge fringe benefit charges and that sort of thing, so.
And it's not to deter people either, to say, we charge them, maybe they won't ask.
Yeah, it's not that. Yeah, it's not that. It's not that.
And this is something all organizations do.
Yeah.
There's a long history as to why it got to what it was at, but we're luckily well past that now.
So anyone have any further questions for Laura, Mike Cochran, or the police chief? Would someone like to make a motion of the consideration of the proposed revision of the Town's Freedom Act information?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
If there's no further discussion, Kim and Phil, please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
That moves us to old business. We have no old business. And now we're going to do miscellaneous business and communication from our town manager, Mike Cochran.
Well, I just wanted to say this month was extremely rewarding in that we got to open the playground. And if you hadn't been up there, it's... Even if you ain't got kids, you got to go up there and just watch. It is crowded, and there's a lot of children there, and they're having a blast. And it was really, really nice, because when we did the ribbon cutting, you know, it was like a bum rush of children. They were everywhere.
We couldn't hardly get what we were saying done.
Oh, yeah, it was amazing. You know, in talking with Kyle and Alicia, they had said, you know, a few years ago, one of their... They were trying to figure out, like, what could they do if they really wanted to? And one of the things was, oh, we'd love to redo the playground. And the answer was, that's never going to happen. And it happened. And I'm telling you, it's an amazing playground. So I thank everybody for allowing it to happen. And it just was really, really neat to see, because there's kids from all over the place out there having a good time. My kids are too small, or too big, I mean, but I was up there just watching, and it's just really, really neat to see. So.
We go once a week. I've got two small kids. We do once a week, maybe twice a week.
And you got an eight-year-old that just showed up.
Yeah, we just, yeah. So I'd be there one extra day, so.
Yeah, and then the other thing was, we got the parade this Saturday. So look for a good parade, and it'll be coming the same way it did last year. So going down from Walgreens down towards the bottom of the hill. And that, wish everybody a Merry Christmas, even though it's only December 1st.
We're there, dude. We're already there. I'm just going to kind of follow Mike's footsteps, and then we'll pass the torch on. But the Christmas parade will be this Saturday at 5:30. If you're not available to make it out in person, we are doing live feeds on Facebook and Aben and TV. And that will be brought to you in part by Adam Boat and John Phelps. And again, about the playground, there's just so many people. I know that day, I feel like I left out several people thanking for their volunteering, their hard work with the playground. And I just want to give a shout out to Public Works, the Recs Department, every citizen in the town of Aben, and every construction crew that was there, the Wells Springs Foundation for the grant. It was just a nice collab of everyone in the communicate... or in the community. It was a nice come-together of everyone, and it just shows that when you have people, things can get done. So the other I want to say, I want to give a big shout out to the Aben and Girls volleyball team. The last Saturday, me and Chief Holbrook got the pleasure of escorting them back through town, and nothing but good feedback from that, from the volleyball players, to the parents, to everyone that just was out and about on Main Street and Coming Street when we came through. And I know the day is going to come that we're going to have that volleyball team in here and recognize them for that. I think this is something that hadn't been done since, like, 1983, if I'm not mistaken. So big ups to the girls' state 3A volleyball champs. Last Saturday, we also did the tree lighting down at the information center, and we had a nice turnout for that. We still have the decorated trees. We have about 25 decorated trees, I think. Is that right, about 25 from local businesses and organizations? We're still taking votes. Those votes for the best tree will go on until December the 30th. And you can vote by donating school supplies or pet supplies. And all that information is inside of the information center to cast your vote and drop off your donations. And I think that you can cast your vote or drop off the donations that is Monday through Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I think that, like, we've got some nice trees down there this year, so. If you haven't had a chance to get out and check that out, please do get out and check that out. And I think that's all I have today. Wayne Austin, do you have anything?
I believe it was Derek that had discussed here at council about trying to get some signage for recognizing state championships from the high school. And we all thought that was a great idea. And I spoke with Ms. Comebo, principal up at the high school, and asked if they could get together the state championships and let us know what years. So we'd get how many that we would have to have. And she said that it would take a little while to get that together, but she would get it to me.
I think that's a good idea.
I think Mr. Cochran was going to look at some signage that we might be able to do with that.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, just throwing this out there, where would we put that signage? Would we have two, like, you know, like one?
Well, you got four entrances, but I would say probably exit 17 seems to be the prettiest of them. I mean, as far as, and also the most used. You could do it right there, or you could do it at either end coming in. I mean, on the signage, we have the fancy signs coming. They're in production, I'm told, and once those come in. But I would think exit 17, that's where we currently have the ones with all the other stuff on there. That seems to be the appropriate place.
I think we'd have to have more than one. We'd have to have at least two.
At least two. I was going to say two.
Maybe all four entrances covered, I don't know.
Yeah, I'd have to take a look at it and see what they got. But yeah, that would be... I mean, because for a town this size, to have state championship, anything, is pretty amazing. And I think we beat Christiansburg in volleyball.
I think, yeah.
Yeah, I was there like a year and a half, two years ago, watching them, and they're good. So the fact that we won is really amazing.
All we do is win, win, win.
It's all good.
All we do, Mike Cochran. Welcome to Aben. Donna, do you have anything?
No, I just encourage people to look on the website and see everything that's going on. Seems like we have something going on all the time, so. I was looking at my calendar here this week. I've got a bunch of things. It's cool, yeah, so. But I enjoy it. I love serving Aben. And if we don't have our mid-month meeting, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and remember that Jesus is the reason for the season.
Thank you, Donna. Amanda, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing more. Y'all have covered it.
All right, so that's going to move us... Mike Cochran, do you have anything that you would like to add to that, or?
No, I appreciate it.
And the parade will be the same way that we ran the parade last year. It will be the same way. It will be starting at the old, down by the ABC store, running back to Tanner Street, right?
Correct, yeah.
And I think that, you know, anyone that has a business that will be operating or anything on Saturday, please be well aware of the detours and, you know, the time restraint that we're in. So I just want to throw that out there as well, too. So well, now we'll move on to appointments of boards and committees. We've got about four of those. I don't know if we need to go into closed session over these, but...
Whatever y'all want.
Whatever y'all want to do. I don't know if y'all had a chance to look at the reappointments of the boards and committees, but if you all feel like that we need to go into closed session, we can't...
Most of them are just reappointments, except for tourism.
Yeah, and that's a vacancy.
And if somebody feels confident enough with these three names, go ahead. I'm just...
What were the three names? I don't...
It was, here we go.
Excuse me, Wayne. Do you have someone on there that you particularly know? Amanda, do you have someone on there that you particularly know? We know, Vice Mayor.
Uh, let's... Can we do a reappointment of those that are eligible? And then we could go into a quick closed session, discuss tourism.
All right, so.
That worked. I'd like to move, we reappoint Taylor Bettis and Tyler Vinsel to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee, to reappoint Michael Weaver to the Board of Building Code Appeals, and to reappoint Mike Rush to the Aben and redevelopment housing authority.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Kim and Phil, please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
I guess we will go into closed session now?
We'll need to read the...
Amanda, do you want to read that? Oh, Wayne? Go ahead, Wayne. No, go for it, Wayne. Go for it, Wayne.
If council so desires, closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended Section 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of considering applications for appointment/reappointment with a position in the Tourism Advisory Board.
And that's all.
That's all?
Yes. We've heard you.
Thank you, Amanda.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Kim and Phil, please call roll.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Austin?
Aye.
And Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
And with that being said, we are going to now go adjourn to closed session. And with that being said, we are going to now go adjourn to closed session.